The August 11th meeting of the Morrisville Planning and Zoning Board is now in session. We'll note that Member Michael will be voting tonight, and will everybody please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
To the flag, the United States of America, to the Republicans which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion for adoption of the agenda?
I make a motion to adopt the agenda.
Second.
Chairman Ocharia moves, do I have a second?
Second.
Member Michael seconds, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Do I have a motion for approval of the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes.
Member Roebuck moves, do I have a second?
A second.
Member Tar Hei seconds it, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
There are no presentations, we move on to public comments. Is there anybody in the audience who has a public comment that they would like to make about something that is not on tonight's agenda? Okay, we move on to number seven, old business. No old business, okay, now we're up to new business, and we will have Chris Lawson. Mr. Lawson is going to present.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Planning and Zoning Board. Can y'all hear me? Okay, there we go. All right, so, good evening. Tonight, I will provide an introduction to Phase One of the 2021 Land Use Plan Implementation Project. This phase is titled TOD Development and Zoning Plan. So let's just review the process and timing, and a little bit of why I'm here, and why I'm presenting this item tonight. So, in 2021, the town adopted a new land use plan. Since that time, staff have done a few separate items to implement it, but this is a true large-scale implementation of that plan. So tonight, I will do an overview of the project, I'll introduce the Phase One of the project to this group. On September 14th, the town's consultant, a group called Housel Levine, will conduct a work session with this same group. Housel Levine, if you remember, also were our consultants on the land use plan itself, so that they're fairly familiar with the town, with some of staff, and then with the land use plan. Overall, overall projects, so that'd be Phases One and Two, we aim for a completion of winter of 2023. And then I want to note, Town Council's going to have a similar presentation and work session after the Planning and Zoning Board. So let's start, and I'll start talking about the 2021 Land Use Plan. I think most of you were on the board when it was coming for review, but some of you weren't, so I'll kind of go over that, and happy to take any questions you may have about it. So, the plan was adopted in February 21, so since it's been adopted, you know, what does the town do with it? The town put a lot of time and effort into it, why do we have it, what does it do? So, a few different things. So, the first one is it established 13 land use categories, and these are not zoning districts. These are categories for what the town envisions the future land use to be. That can include types of uses of the land, residential densities, how the buildings are to be designed, how the sites are designed to be laid out, maybe in relation to the parking, maybe in relation to roads, landscaping, all sorts of things like that. So every parcel in town is labeled with one of these future land use categories, and is shown on a future land use map, very similar to the zoning map. Each parcel just has a color designation that links up to one of the land use designations. The Land Use Plan identified the town's vision and goals for the future of development in the town. The goals are later in this presentation, I'll note that they are not in any particular order. Next, the town did sub-area planning for three sub-areas of town, is the Town Center, the McCrimmon Extension, and the TOD East. These were specifically identified because they were suitable for development, redevelopment, or they were somehow unique compared to other developments. So, the visions that came from the plan for these three areas are not your run-of-the-mill subdivisions and retail strip malls, they were slightly different. Each had their own unique characteristics. For instance, the town center's envisioned property right downtown hall here, a mix of uses to be a town area, town gathering area, potential festival gathering area, and a mix of uses. The other two had their own unique characteristics. And finally, the plan ended with an implementation, and these are 40 key action items. And to me, we've got the plan, the town's adopted it, now it's time to implement it and really take that vision and put it, you know, put it to work. I'll note, there's 40 key action items. As I mentioned, town staff have already done a few of them, this project will take care of a number of them, some will still be around after this project, so it won't fully 1,000% implement the plan, but some of these key action items are continuous things, such as, one of the action items is continue to coordinate the regional partners. That's not something I'll ever end, that's something town staff will constantly do, RDU, town carry, other regional players. Any questions at this point? Okay, thanks. All right, so, I talked a lot about the land use plan and the land use designations. This is the land use map. Every piece of property in town, even the property that you all live in is shown on this map, and it has a land use designation. So again, these are not the same thing as zoning districts, they are not, whereas a zoning district and zoning rules are legally enforceable, the land use plan and land use map are a guiding document for town. So me, as a town staff and a zoning officer, I cannot go write a citation of someone based on the land use plan, this is just the vision, the guiding document. The zoning follows the land use plan itself. Again, these designate preferred uses, densities, building design, and among other things. And you can see, on the map itself, there are three areas outlined in black, those were the sub-areas that were studied in more detail with the land use plan. I'll keep going, I can go back if you need me to, please let me know. This is the vision and goals that was laid out in the land use plan. Vision's kind of a longer paragraph here, but the goals are kind of summarized on the right here, again, they're in no particular order, but these were the overall goals of this plan, and with future development in the town. All right, I'll keep moving. So, again, the town spent a great deal of time, staff effort and board effort, creating this plan. It was adopted in February of 2021 after a two- or three-year study and effort. And so, since that time, staff has begun implementing this plan. So, the very first thing that was implemented from this plan were several rezonings. If you were on the board last summer, you remember I spoke a lot about the McCrimmon Extension area and the TOD area. Those were the first two rezonings to take away the industrial zoning that was in both of those areas, and zone it to either the Business Activities Center along McCrimmon with a gateway overlay, and then the TOD areas. So, those were both done last summer, and they were to prevent incompatible development. And I'm going to talk about incompatible development for a second, because in the planning world and language, we often talk about incompatible development, separating incompatible uses through zoning, keeping residential away from heavy industrial, vice versa. The way I mean to use incompatible development in this is that, there had been areas zoned industrial, there still may be industrial uses there, but the town had a vision for future land use which does not meet that industrial. So, the use might be compatible, it might not be compatible with the current adjacent uses, but the town has identified for a future use, you know, not to be industrial anymore, to be something else, to be maybe a mixed-use development, maybe to be a town center, maybe to be something else. So we're going to use that term a little bit, and that's really what I mean, it's not necessarily that the use currently is incompatible, but the future vision for the use is not compatible with what it is today. And again, if a site's industrial and has been operating, and the town rezones that property, that business can continue to operate until it decides to shut down voluntarily. All right, so a few other things, since the plan has been adopted, the first one is that amendments to the Tree Preservation Section of the UDO were proposed and actually approved last Tuesday night, so three days ago. That's part of the plan's goal of environmental stewardship. There's also been progress on the Town Center. The third thing is not really something we can accomplish, but it's something ongoing, it is, when developers call town staff, whether myself or Planning Manager Elliot Ward, you know, and they say, "Look, we want to rezon this land, we want to build this or that", we can look at the plan, say, "Town Council set this vision for the plan, it is either compatible with what you're proposing, or it is not at all what you're proposing", and thus, we can guide developers on what the town would prefer for those areas. So, I'll say, you know, this board and Town Council hears a lot of rezonings, but even below that, with staff level, there's, you know, every other day, there's somebody calling about this or that rezoning, and we can guide them based off these plans. And finally, the plan has, again, 40 key action items that are all at various stages of implementation. Okay, and I think I explained this already, but again, there's 40 key action items, not all of them will be finished with this project, but a number of them will, and some are ongoing or working with other departments or other regional partners, and I've just listed some of those here. And then, slide them on. Yeah, okay, sorry, I forgot which slide I was on. So, onto the project at hand, and what I want to discuss tonight, and what the town's kicking off, and we've hired a consultant for. So this is, we've titled this, "The Land Use Plan, Zoning and Development Standards Recommendations." So it's broken into two phases. The first one is Phase One, it's what we're really kicking off tonight, this is titled "The TOD Development and Zoning Plan." This includes, you know, drafting design standards for a transit-oriented area, and a development plan for the same area. I can scroll back up, but essentially, the town's area that's zoned TOD is between Church Street and the railroad tracks or 54, north and south of McCrimmon, and then adjacent to the sheets, that's the intersection of 54 and McCrimmon. So I'll show a map if you need me to later on, that's generally the area. And so, the second phase will be a full UDO review and update based on the plan, and that could mean a number of options. But essentially, the framework is, we're going to evaluate the zoning map, the current zoning districts, if those zoning districts are still needed by the town, if other zoning districts might be needed instead. If you think of the history of the development of zoning districts in Morrisville, these were set by the 2009 Land Use Plan and installed in 2013 or 2014. That's when the current UDO was adopted, and the current zoning map was truly set. So again, the town's doing the same process that it did, I guess, 10 years ago at this point, evaluating which zoning districts are needed by the town, which ones do the town's plans really call for, and which ones don't. This is Phase Two, so Phase One will start before Phase Two, but Phase Two will start shortly, and both wrap up next fall or next winter. And so, to explain why Phase One is first, essentially, the land is zoned TOD now, so a developer could come in and build on it. So town staff decided to prioritize getting a framework set for that area, and truly having a more detailed vision for what the town would like to see in these areas. So, staff have met with developers about these areas, but nobody has moved forward at this time, and we just kind of say, "Look, we got this other plan, it's under design, happy to work with you, but hopefully you wait until the town sets this real true plan." So, what does successful implementation look like, at least to me, I designed a slide, so one of three slides. So the first one is strategic rezonings to prevent incompatible development. So, again, the site's currently industrial, and the land use plan calls for it to be low-density residential, most likely that parcel is next to other low-density residential, and the plan says it's not in the best interest for the town to allow, you know, redevelopment as another industrial use. So this would come through town-sponsored rezonings, meaning town staff would identify these parcels, and we would handle the rezonings, there would be no other applicant, though a property owner, of course, you know, would be involved, they'd be alerted, they could, you know, challenge it, request different things. And again, this would allow businesses to continue while also limiting future growth or expansion of those businesses. Okay, number two of three. This one's a big one, so I think it almost sounds simple upfront, but it's really going to be a big process over the next year. So a comprehensive review of the UDO, and recommended amendments to match the vision identified in the land use plan. So this is going to, this is going to be a fairly large undertaking, it could touch a number of things, including allowed uses, allowed zoning districts, setbacks, we could create sustainability initiatives, all sorts of things like this. So, again, if you think about the history of Morrisville and our development regulations, 2009, there was a land use plan, as a part of that land use plan, they created the UDO, and the UDO, they adopted a new zoning map in 20, so 2013, the UDO was adopted, 2014, the zoning map was adopted. So again, we're just repeating that same process, and trying to update the UDO for the next 10 to 15 years. Any questions at this time? I want to get a sip of water. So, three of three, what does land use plan implementation, or successful land use plan implementation look like? This is the third one, this is the creation of a small area plan and zoning standards for a transit-oriented development zoning district. So this includes, you know, detailed land use recommendations, so not broad parcel-by-parcel, you know, the town identifies general retail, maybe a hotel, this or that, this is very specific to these sites, where exactly the road's going to go, what kind of sidewalks does the town want, what does the town want the buildings to look like, make people feel like, and so, all of that into this plan. This is going to be Phase One, we expect it to take eight to 12 months, clearly, I'd like to wrap it up sooner than that, but that is our general timeframe. This is what the consultant is going to be talking with the Planning and Zoning Board about at the September 14th work session. Okay, so, let me take a break, see if there's any other questions, any thoughts at this time? All right, great. So the next, the rest of my presentation is just about this TOD Development and Zoning Plan. So this document will guide development for the areas of town that are currently zoned TOD. This may be a separate document, it may be worked in the UDO, I haven't fully evaluated which way is probably the better way to go, I think a separate document that we can say this is the TOD plan will be, but this is what the consultant's going to be designing over the next eight to 12 months, this is what the consultant will host a work session with the PCB September 14th, to really get that feedback, ideas on, you know, what kind of build environment does the PCB find desirable for a transit-oriented, pedestrian-oriented kind of area? And so, let me just jump in, and we'll kick this off. So, let's begin, so why TOD? TOD's transit-oriented development, so why are we looking at this, why is it even, you know, an item? And why is it in Morrisville? So, just kind of summarizing development since World War II, zoning's really taken over, development has really been designed to require car-centric development. So that's low residential density, that's large setbacks, drive aisles, high minimum parking requirements, and a separation of uses. So residential is away from commercial, which is away from office, which is away from school, which is away from, you know, all that stuff. So TOD is a callback to a more traditional style of development, which places emphasis on smaller blocks, allowing walkability, really focusing on the use of nearby public transit, whether that be a train, a smart shuttle, bus rapid transit, some other form of public transit rather than a car and a road. TOD allows a mixing of uses, so this doesn't mean that a Ford plant is going to be next to your house, it means upstairs you could live, downstairs you could shop, you could get a coffee shop, you could have your office space, something that is slightly more compatible while not completely separating those uses. And this means that a TOD would allow residential densities at a level to support these transit services. And finally, it focused on open public gathering areas. And so I really want to focus on that word "traditional" because it doesn't mean it's a backward style of development, it doesn't mean it's something that hasn't worked previously, it's actually, I would say, the opposite of that, it's a traditional style of development that has been shown to work, and it's just different than, I think, the development we're all used to, which is, you have your car, you're in your subdivision, you're driving to work, it's something supposed to be a little more mixed-use, walkable, smaller blocks, all sorts of things like that.
Just a quick question, are there, and maybe the consultant will go into this, are there models that, or examples of this, that they'll show, that say, you know, here's where a town like Morrisville is now in the transition to this type of style?
Yeah.
How does that look?
Yeah, they're going to get a little more into that, I've included just a quick YouTube video at the end of this, that kind of is a brief on TODs. They're kind of all over the country, in some areas, you don't even expect them. One in North Carolina, that's been fairly, I don't know the word, not popular, but well-known, I guess, is Charlotte, the south side of Charlotte, that's kind of grown with the light rail, and redeveloped in the last probably 10 to 20 years. The developers we've spoken with about developing TOD are mostly from Northern Virginia DC area, they've got experience with that. But yeah, they're going to have more examples, the consultants will. I'm also going to distribute what we're calling homework, which is really just for the board to say, "I've been to this development in this area, and here's what I liked about it, here's what I didn't like about it." And that homework doesn't have to specifically be TOD, it could just be a, you know, more vertically mixed-use development, just to get some ideas about what the board likes, what the board doesn't like. But yeah, and then I've got some pictures at the end, just to talk about some of those things, but they'll have more specific examples. All right, let's keep moving. So, part of this project, the first thing I did is a little research on the history of land use plans in Morrisville. I'll tell you, if you ever get a chance to read the 1998, 1999 plan, it's, I was laughed a few times, it was pretty interesting. So here's just a snapshot in time from text from the plan. In 1998, the town issued a moratorium on all development over five dwelling units an acre, until a land use plan was adopted. You can see in my aerial image here, this is what the town generally looked like in 98 or 99, and that color is where the TOD zoning is today. Population was around 5,000. This is a quote from that land use plan, kind of discusses, you know, I think already, at that time, people were looking at different kinds of transit stations, something to move away from just pure vehicle-oriented kind of development. So, keep moving. Next one is the 2009 Land Use Plan, population's around 18,000. Text from the plan, it just says, "The quantity of recently approved developments for a small town like Morrisville is quite substantial." I just found that interesting, and then again, highlighted is that TOD area, you can see some of the development has grown around it since the last image I shoot. Text from this plan, you know, "Most land use plans discuss transportation, because transportation and land use are so interconnected," and it just talked about establishing developments which support a walkable, multimodal community. And then finally, we'll go on to the most recent land use plan, the current land use plan. When this was adopted, the population was just over 29,000, and again, see the area in the satellite, and how much growth has happened since then. And I'll keep going. So this land use plan identified three areas of town for a TOD, it was roughly 120 acres, you can see this map here, it's a nice lovely brown color right in the middle of town, and with the TOD East with the black outline. So when the land use plan was adopted, as I mentioned earlier in the slides, one of the first things staff did was to implement the TOD as well as the McCrimmon Extension zoning, so the zoning matched up with the land use plan. And this was to prevent the incompatible development. The TOD sections, if you follow my mouse, this, the railroad track splits the town in half, on the western or left side, these are mostly industrial areas. Again, industrials work there, it's been fine, but the town kind of views it as being something very different than what it is now. So, part of the project is designing sub-area plans for the other sections of TOD, but this TOD East already has a sub-area plan, which is on this next slide. And essentially, what the plan is now to take this plan, create two other ones for the other TOD areas, and then install some very specific zoning regulations, identifying how the town would like to see, basically, the place built, you know, so what sidewalks do you want? Do you want pedestrian bumpouts at intersections? What kind of parking do you want? Do you want parallel parking on the streets? Do you want no parking on the streets? Do you want a lot of glass as you walk by that first floor? Do you want different materials? Who knows? All kinds of things like that, that's really what the zoning regulations will get into. All right, so, just keep moving on, discussing Phase One. First one, the first, Phase One includes kickoff and public engagement. So, the consultant will be meeting with this board on the 14th of September. That day, I have also set up a series of interviews for them, for the consultants, to meet with local property owners that own property in that area, two of the property owners that own more large-scale tracks in that area, specifically 101, to kind of discuss what's happening with the property. They are meeting with several local developers, they are meeting with several of the nationwide, I'd say nationwide-scale developers that staff have met with before, they are meeting with, who are they meeting with? Meeting with the heads of various departments that review development, so not only getting my feedback, but the town engineer, town public works director, fire marshal, so not just, you know, my own imagination, what's what I want to build, but also, how can we actually build it, maintain it, and make a great development for the town. This first section also includes design typology, which I put in parentheses, just means trying to figure out what does the town actually want for this area? They will also design visualizations and hold workshops. This is, again, to kind of decide, what does this board want, what does Town Council want, what do the citizens want? And these workshops will also be designed to have people start thinking, you know, maybe in more detailed ways than you've ever thought before. I don't know if, if you drive around a development and you say, "I like this," or "don't like that," that's, we're going to try to get more of that going, so you really look at the details. And then, finally, they're going to review our UDO's current TOD regulations, and try to see what's working, what's not working. We don't currently have any TOD developments, so really kind of hard to say what's currently working, maybe they might scrap it all and design something new, so. Also includes, they're going to take all that information they've learned, the consultants, I mean, and they're going to actually create code for, you know, staff to review, for PCB to review, and Town Council. And this is supposed to be a form-based code. So, brief explainer of form-based code, you know, well, I'll start with, the way most zoning codes are set up is you got a table, and it says your setbacks are this, your building height is, maximum is this, and you can't cover more than 65% of your lot. So form-based code would take that, but actually make it more pictures, and much more easy to see and say, "This is what the town wants for development." That's a very simple way to explain it. It's a little more than that, but basically, going from just pure tables to more visualizations, this is what the town's going for, here's how to meet this style of development. And then it'll include, these regulations will include review by this board. Oh, and I had my example, that was very handy. So, this information would usually, again, be in the table, just be words, but instead, it's got a lot of pictures in it, it's got a lot of, you know, designed on, how does this make you feel, how does this, is this what you want to see, things like that, rather than just, you have a maximum setback, you have a maximum height, you have this, this or that. So, I've also included an attachment to the City of Virginia Beach's Oceanfront Resort Form-Based Code. If you don't know, my first job was actually in Virginia Beach, and I loved that code, it really made a great waterfront, or oceanfront, made a great environment, and it was pretty simple to kind of digest and understand why they used a form-based code rather than just a standard zoning ordinance. And I'll just keep talking, so, when this is adopted, Phase One of this plan will create the Town of Morrisville's TOD Development Plan, and Development and Zoning Plan. So, next steps, identify this as a specially-called PCB meeting on September 14th. The next item on your agenda tonight is actually to vote to amend your agenda, or your schedule to have this meeting. At that time, the town's consultants will be here, they will conduct a workshop, they will be running the meeting, they will be handling it all, I'll be here, but they're going to be the ones that are really running the show, kind of doing their workshop. gonna be the ones that are really running the show, kind of, kind of doing their workshop. I'm not exactly sure what it's gonna look like, but they do these things with different towns all over the country to kind of get the, get the vision of the project from the towns. All right. So let's move on. I'm almost done. I'm flying through. Does anybody have any questions before I get into kind of what I designed as an example work session?
Is the form-based coding only to be used with the TOD zoning, or is it eventually going to apply to, you know, every type of zoning that Morrisville has?
Yeah, currently, it's only, we're only planning to do it in the TOD right now. So, form-based code can work great in most mixed-use and commercial developments. It doesn't work quite as well in a purely single-family home style, but right now, we're only looking at the TOD for now. And I, I think, you know, if I go off the cliff a little bit here, it's, if it works out and it works well, I think that's something we could look at when we update the UDO in the future. So, any other questions? All right. So I'll jump into what I propose as an example work session. This is just a basic, kind of preparing you for maybe what you'll see next time. The pictures might not be the greatest, most of them are just off Google Maps. It's, again, just to get you thinking, I'm gonna point out elements of the built environment that I like, or I notice, maybe try to see what you think about it. So, here's what I would request. You focus on what picture, or how the picture makes you feel and why. So, I think sometimes it sounds a little hokey, you say, "How does this building, or how does this development make you feel?" But that is truly, I think, is important in, in, you know, building a, a great town. Also, note, you know, which image would you rather have in town? This is the thing that this board is getting to decide when designing the TOD district. This next question, I think, is critical. It is, would you feel safe in this area? So, one of the biggest drawbacks to pedestrian development around, you know, really the country is, people don't feel safe walking. Pedestrians are at a disadvantage to a car. I've had a friend get hit by a bike, just a, a simple bike, and they were at a disadvantage to that. So, what makes you feel safe? What would make you want to get out and walk around? What would, you know, maybe somebody, you know, I don't, I don't have limitations on movement. What if somebody who maybe had to use crutches, or a cane, or something else like that? What, what would they be safest in? How would they be able to move around these areas? And then finally, just think about places you've been that you think, "Wow, this place is great." And what made that built environment great? So let's go to the first one. All right. So a lot of these examples are Raleigh. I lived in downtown Raleigh for a few years. There's nothing against Raleigh, it's just stuff I saw all the time and could not stand. So, we'll start with the picture on the left. This is Hargett Street. The, the street you're seeing is actually one of the streets that runs north out of downtown, one of the main streets. So, on the left is gonna be the city of Raleigh offices, and on the right is this building. I think it's an AT&amp;T building, and the city recently, and allowed a mural here. So I'm just gonna tell you what I like or don't like, and if you have thoughts, I'd love to hear them. So, there are no windows whatsoever. I used to walk next to this building all the time, felt like I was walking next to a giant wall, and I was trapped between four lanes of traffic in this giant wall, and it was loud, and if something happened to me, you know, cars are flying by, but there's nobody here in the windows to see me, I'm just kind of here, I'm stranded. All I wanted to do was get to that next block and get away from this area. On the right here is an example from Seattle. Very different feeling, in my opinion. There is a dedicated bike lane. You can kind of see it behind these cars. There are barricades that actually delineate the bike lane not only horizontally, but vertically. You have trees, you have a first level building, which actually breaks the building into a human scale. So I don't feel like I'm just next to a giant wall, but they actually broke that first level away. And if you've never noticed that before, you know, when I realized this years ago, that buildings that have a first floor that's different than the rest of it, and really makes me feel like this building's at my scale, and not just something so beyond me that I can't ever fathom it, it really changes your perception. The next thing is a lot of glass. There's a lot of glass. So, you're walking next to it, it doesn't just feel like there's a flat wall, but actually, there's glass to see inside, and there's almost somewhere to continue, and maybe people are sitting there drinking coffee or something. Next thing on this is, there's actually, it's kind of hard to tell in this picture. So you see how the building here, and then the next rows actually are set back from even that first floor. Let me know if you, if you can't tell. I'm, I'd be happy to explain it more. That is often called a step back on higher levels. And so, again, it contributes to the human scale of, "I'm down here, and, and you can see above that building, and it's not, again, just a flat wall coming up." Just a number of different things that I, I like about this area. And then, you know, more windows, a, a very different color. Blue's my favorite color. I happen to like this picture quite a bit. And then, the last thing I'll point out is, if you go down the front facade of this building, it actually recesses right here before coming back out. And you can see the parapet actually goes above that recess, and my guess is that on the roof, that's where all the mechanical equipment, the HVAC units, all that stuff is, and the parapet goes above that and, and makes it so you'll never see, and hopefully not hear as much of that, that sound. So yeah, that's the first one. Any thoughts on that?
I think I agree with you that, you know, the Pike Street in Seattle is more visually appealing, but I can see on Hargett Street, being the downtown area, and it looks like there's a little bit of, you know, art, if that's what that is there. You know, I can see, like, some nice murals on the wall, something like that. You know, just to put something on the walls if you can't do, you know, what you did in Seattle.
Yeah, yeah. And I forgot to mention one last thing, actually, and it's actually positive for the Raleigh picture. And, and that is a great point. Murals, I think, will be good. We have a planner who is looking into a mural program to see, you know, if there's something like that is appropriate from Morrisville, and where this could go. The, the last thing I'll point out, and sorry, I get, I get really into these things. Raleigh has actually several signs here for wayfinding. I don't see any here, I actually don't know much about this area of Seattle, or if it's critical at all, but downtown Raleigh, if you do walk around, they do have good wayfinding signs. It's, "Where's the historic district? Where's the Capitol Building? Where's this or that?" And that, that's also really critical for knowing where to go, and feeling like you're in a, a place that kind of matters.
Yeah. I, I, I agree with you there. The, the other thing I wanted to point out on the Seattle side, I don't like these power lines showing there, right? If, if we are going to do this right, our requirement should be, you know, underground. This shouldn't be as visible as this one is.
Yeah.
Right? The, the other thing would be lighting in general in this area, because right now, I'm here, I'm only seeing one street light, right? The question, you know, we have to balance between lit areas versus, you know, something that tends to be darker.
Yeah, definitely agreed. I'll explain, you know, while, while I'm up here, the, the electric lines in Morrisville. All new electric lines have to be buried as they are installed. Existing electric lines, the applicant has to either bury them, or apply to Duke Energy for a waiver, which then the town engineer reviews to make sure it's, it's legit. But Duke Energy has a set standard for how many linear feet they will allow before the lines are buried.
So, last time when we had talked about burying the power line, we were told that the, you know, state passed a law saying, "The towns can't ask for that." Does that impact this one, or no?
It, it does. So essentially, the state passed a law that, that does say something very similar to that, and the way it's enforced is basically, if, if the power lines on their, on a development site, they are so required to bury it, but if it continues past their site, and they can't, then we're not allowed, the town's not allowed to make a developer bury it. Does that sort of make sense? So, you know, 'cause we got, there's, there's poles that are in the ground that might not actually even be on their property. I don't know if that really makes a lot of sense, but you're right. There, there was a law that, that was passed. So what else? Anything else about this slide? I'll jump to the next one, or we can come back if needed.
I, I just wanted to note on the Seattle image there, I really like how the trees are sort of spaced out in front of the storefront, so that when walking by, maybe on the opposite side of the street, on the sidewalk, or if you're driving by, you can see what that business is, hopefully be good for the local economy. But also, something to note in, in both images is the types of trees they use, and they, on the right-hand side, they look much better maintained, but I know a lot of the sidewalks around here in Morrisville, you know, the trees can hang down, and I guess, I'm a taller guy, I'm like six-two, but you know, having to duck down to, to be able to walk on the sidewalk when there's only one sidewalk on the side of the road, seems like, I don't know if that's a town responsibility, or if those trees are considered on private property, but I think maintaining those to a degree where, you know, people can walk without having to duck over a few feet.
I would have never thought about that point. That's a good one. Yeah, yeah. There's a lot of mark town responsibilities, some are private property, but yeah, generally, when they're, when they're first planted, you clip the bottom so it grows only really at the top. So, that's a very good point. And if I could explain that a little more. So the trees in Raleigh, I don't know when they were installed, but I, I, I highly doubt they were installed the same way that trees are installed today downtowns. So if you go to a downtown tree today, like probably these trees up, in Seattle, there's a whole underground system that is designed to allow those roots to grow and expand, and it is, it is massive under the streets. I doubt Raleigh had installed that at the time of this, and so those roots are probably gonna grow and crack the sidewalk at some point. But now, there's systems that entirely contain the roots and also feed the trees. So, thank you.
One other thing that kind of stood out to me is the color coding of the signs. I know Cary has a color code for what, how the business signs could be. I, I don't know whether in our sign code, we kind of go down that path or not, and maybe as you look at the facade and what kind of signs and signage they could have, does the coloring match up with this topic?
Yeah. That's good. I, I think I understood most of the quote, but essentially, if there's directional signs, any kind of government-installed signs, those are exempt for direction. Signs on the building, I understand, I think you said coloring and making sure they match it up.
Yeah, I was just looking at, for example, the shops, right? They have white and green coloring in between there, you see? So, that, that's what I'm trying to say is, does it kind, do we need to think about uniformity of color in a TOD area or not, when it comes to business signages?
That's interesting. I, I think we'd have to think about that more. So generally, at least since 2016, there was a big Supreme Court ruling, towns cannot regulate content of signs because it violates the First Amendment. I don't know if we just, the town just said, "Every sign has to be this." Maybe that still allows, I don't know. Let me think about that one, I'm not sure.
The only reason I pointed out is Cary does enforce color coding. They, they strictly want people to have black and white signs. Even in downtown, that's what they have.
Okay. I have to look in that. I wonder if it's a historic district, or some, I'm not sure.
Yeah.
Okay. Any other? I got a few more slides, I'll go on if you'd like. We can come back if you need to. All right. So again, beating up on Raleigh here, this is, this is the main street out of downtown. Parkside, Parkside Restaurant is on the right there. On the left, it was a vacant site, but it's actually gonna develop and be a hotel now. Again, we have massive four-lane road. You might say, "Why am I using a four-lane example?" This is in Raleigh's downtown. This is the most pedestrian-oriented area of Raleigh, and there's these massive, you know, four-lane roads. I'm gonna tell you, I've walked that, traffic does not stop. If you're, if they got a green light, they got places to be. So, other things I noticed about this left is, the sidewalks are narrower. I think they're five or six feet. Not a lot of trees, nothing really breaking up this block. It's a very long block. If, if you've never had a chance, if you're, if you live in a subdivision with a cul-de-sac, walk, you know, walk a mile and see how it feels, and see how long it takes you to do it. Go to an urban area, walk that same mile, see how it feels, and see how long it took. It'll probably be about the same time, but it'll feel like it took much shorter, because you're not just walking one long stretch. Picture on the right, it looks fairly similar. This is actually a picture that senior planner Danielle Kirich suggested to me. She used to work in this community and saw this whole streetscape get redesigned. So something I really want to point out about this is the very large sidewalks that are here. The materials used, and finally, the, oh, what are those called? Ballards. The ballards are used. So the ballards are used because there is a very low curb line here. So, there's almost actually no curb at all. So the ballards are what keeps the cars from accidentally crashing into the buildings. So, the reason they did this in Florida was, for this area, this was a main gathering area. So the town would shut down the street to have big events, and the, the no curb option was used, as, as Danielle, our senior planner, explained. People had kids, they had strollers, they didn't have to worry about that curb line, or if it got dark, they didn't want to worry about falling over the curb accidentally. So there was just no curb at all. So you can go from the right side of that screen all the way to the left, and not have to worry about tripping or anything like that. This town also, as you, you can, you can see, they designed the road to look a certain way. It's not just asphalt. It is, it's maintained, I, I don't know what the material is, but it's maintained to have, have a design in the road, and give a kind of distinctive appearance. I wish I'd included the, the vision of this picture before they did this streetscape. Before this, the sidewalks were way over here, there was nowhere for people to sit. It's not a lot of room, it just looked like any other street. There was a lot of parking. Something that's kind of a neat way to go about it. Any, any thoughts on these before I move on?
You mentioned on the Florida side, no place to sit, or there are places to sit. I'm sure there are, I'm just not seeing them, like benches along there or something.
Yeah, so I didn't explain that very well. So, this area happens to have a lot, the way Danielle's explaining it to me, this area has a lot of restaurants. Previously, the sidewalk was only five feet wide, a lot of restaurants, the outdoor dining area, and then those people were sitting outside, nowhere to walk past. The city really prioritized having nice, wide sidewalks, so that restaurants can have outdoor dining, but still not take up that whole rest, that whole, whole sidewalk area. So just currently, I don't, I don't see any in this exact picture, but that was one of the goals. Also have facades coming out. It's kind of a classic, traditional design environment, and then if you also notice, the buildings are tall, but they're not beyond a, a human scale. They're not, you know, I'm not walking past the Empire State Building. This is a couple-story building. And, and hopefully in future, future presentations, we'll talk about the, there's a certain ratio between the width of a street and the height of the buildings. That is supposed to be this kind of design guideline. We'll talk about that in a future presentation, though. All right. So I'll keep moving for now. Happy to come back and facilitate more conversation. So I'll start with saying, first of all, none of these pictures, I think, look great, but they were all used to kind of, just areas I knew, which I wanted to kind of discuss. So, we're talking about a TOD development, we're talking about multi, multimodal, we're talking about people walking, people biking, and kind of getting out of cars. And I wanted to highlight specifically several types of bike lanes. There are plenty others. These are just a few I found. So the first one, top left, this is actually the newest one. Here's the Holiday Inn in Raleigh. You can see it's the Circle Building. If you've ever been downtown, it's soon to be torn down. But here's the bike lane. Something I like about the bike lane, it's got a different color. That's nice. It does help you, as a driver, stand, you know, kind of see the bike lane a little better. Something I like even more than different colors is something that comes vertically out of the ground, that physically prevents a car from running over a bicyclist. Not a very glamorous way to say it, but that's, that's the truth. These help prevent that, and drivers can always see them, they'll actually hit them, and a biker's a little safer in that area. The third one, this is, I think, in my opinion, probably the, the worst-looking picture, but if you'll see, there's a bike lane here that is not only protected by those vertically, vertically placed, kind of bollard-like features, but also the parallel parking is on the outside of those ballards. So, not only is a biker now protected by these, these bollard-like features, but they're also then protected by cars that are parked, and almost physically separated from, from the traffic. There are other examples I'd like to show also of, you know, the National Planning Conference was in San Diego this year. San Diego has bike lanes everywhere that are on the road, but actually separated by a physical median. So bikers really feel a lot safer, and just aren't next to cars that could go anywhere from fifteen up to eighty miles an hour. So, a big part of that building that safe environment. Any thoughts on those? We can come back if you need to. I'll keep, keep moving. I don't, I think I, yeah, this is my last example. Okay, so again, I'm beating up on Raleigh, but this time, I'm not downtown, I'm actually in North Hills here on the left. I'll tell you, the first thing I don't like about this picture is the angled parking. This style of parking positions the driver in, in a way that they cannot see when they back out. You can't see what's left, you can't see what's right, you can only see what's ahead of you. Parallel parking, you can see your mirrors, you can see both ways. If you park in ninety degrees, at least you're turned, so you can turn your head to see. This style of forty-five-degree angle parking positions drivers, and, and what I would consider, and I've read a few studies, I could probably cite, that say it's the most dangerous style of parking. The second thing about forty-five-degree angle parking, and even ninety-degree angle parking, is it creates a wider, a wider area for pedestrians to walk from one side of the road to the other. So, this is North Hills. It's kind of in the wintertime, the trees are dying. I didn't, I didn't mean to use that to sway the opinions, but that is something I, I really don't like. I think it's not optimal. On the right, again, another example, I didn't write the city, this was also in Florida. I just liked it, 'cause it has these bump outs for pedestrians, so you're closer to get across. I just liked it because it has these bump outs for pedestrians, so you're closer to get across, and you have parallel parking in between these bump outs. One other thing I'd like to have about this is some kind of vertical indication saying there's pedestrians crossing there. While I'm up here, I'll say, if you drive around and you see crosswalks, it is great that they're striped across the ground, but that does nothing to sell a driver coming to you. There's nothing vertical to say, hey, there's people walking here. My opinion, every crosswalk needs to have some kind of vertical thing saying, hey, there's pedestrians walking, not just paint on the on the ground. Another neat thing about this, again, the road is not asphalt, it's a different kind of material. You have space outside for people to eat, more facades, and the roads are actually imprinted on the, I don't know if you can see, there's a, that's a sign that actually says, I think it's Street, yeah, Magnolia. It says Magnolia Avenue here. I thought that was kind of a unique sense of place creator here. All right, that is.
Reminds me of Petersburg. In Petersburg, they have, you know, they developed this kind of area where you have got restaurants, you know, boutique, shops, all of them on the two sides with pretty much the structure that you're showing here in the picture.
Yeah, and and this is the last slide I have, but you could, you could Google transit oriented developments, complete streets, safe streets, any of that. You can just go to Google Images if you don't want to read and just look at the pictures people have, the designs. A lot of towns around, I was disappointed, I actually did that, I found a lot of plans to do these things. And when I got the aerial imagery, they were all under construction and not actually built. I would love to have some more kind of newer things that were built, so.
So on the parking thing, it's really interesting about the wider lanes accommodate the sliding parking, I hadn't thought about that. It's, has the safety element changed with backup camera kind of, and now, is that adjusted? And then what about number of spaces in comparison to parallel parking and people just actually knowing how to parallel park?
Yeah, so the backup camera is a great point, and it it probably is getting safer because of that. That's that's not a bad idea at all, I didn't didn't consider that. I'll say the number of spaces, you can fit many more spaces at an angled parking than you can parallel. So town requires parallel spaces to be nine by, was it nine by 20, I think? Whereas a, so you have 20 feet taken up by each spot, whereas in angled parking space, it's nine by 18. So you can fit, you know, a little over two spaces in that same space. And then, what was your third question? Oh, parallel, difficulty in parallel parking. Of course, if you're not used to it, people always say, oh, I'm intimidated intimidated by going downtown, intimidated by doing this, parallel parking. I used to be the same way, I think people kind of can get used to it, and I think backup cameras can even assist with that. The story I always tell is I grew up in a county that had one stoplight, and I'm okay parallel parking now, I just took a few tries, so. But I know people are hesitant about that.
It's similar to driving in a roundabout. Lot of people in North Carolina don't know how to drive in a roundabout. But they get, they're getting used to it.
And then just general questions, so you could look at these pictures and say, yeah, real preference for the one on the right as an example. Is there, or will there be like cost elements associated with it? Like, I love what's on the menu, but, you know, it's, you know, Flamin' Yon versus whatever, so that's part one. And then the other part of that question is, are there things that are needed to make this work? So, you know, if they come down to a center like this, is it dependent on having other kind of transit options to actually get there?
Yeah, I, you know, I think asphalt's used primarily because asphalt tends to be the cheapest, most efficient option. I would say definitely if if the town's going to maintain the public infrastructure, some kind of brick substance like this is going to be more expensive. I can't tell you the scale of how much more expensive, that's why we're getting Public Works Director involved and 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 other folks. What was the other question?
Well, I guess, part second, I'll lead into that question as well, who picks up the tab for the filet, right?
Yeah, so the the general construction is handled, is going to be handled just like any other neighborhood where the developer comes in, builds all the infrastructure, and then whatever is publicly required, they'll turn over to the town for maintenance ultimately. This might not, this is, that's what's expected with a TOD, it might not, it could be all public or could be private roads, similar to Park West Village has mostly private roads that that the town does not maintain. I will say with the costs of this kind of development, the consultants are interviewing, you know, fairly large scale developers because they are the ones that will most likely have the capital to back these style of projects. These are going to be large projects. You know, I got North Hills as an, is on an example here, because that is, that's not exactly what kind of the idea is, but that's more of a really probably familiar area. Or something, if you go to Park West Village, the kind of main street area they have, something maybe a little larger than that. So the these are going to be expensive to build upfront, no matter what kind of happens. But definitely the costs of long term maintenance will be will be thought of by someone along the way.
And then that second question was, you know, if you create centers like this where it's more walkable and conducive to bikes and so forth, is that dependent on having a others kind of transportation infrastructure to get folks there? So is that dependent on having buses and light rails or whatever to do that?
Yeah, it it, so, and it is, and that's a great question. And I think last year when we were in, when staff was installing these zoning, same questions came up, and it it, the answer I had at the time was it's chicken or the egg. So the town has a smart shuttle service, certainly a stop will be placed here. The, not sure, I can't remember what organization, there's Wake Transit, there's Camp, there's all these regional transportation organizations. One of them's working on what was the Bus Rapid Transit, I can't remember what they call it now, it's very similar, but it is a dedicated kind of bus lane, it's starting in Raleigh, and essentially, instead of installing a light rail and and having a rail system, it is an extra lane that just serves these buses and has nodes along the way. The ones in Morrisville are still being planned out, they're probably a few years down the road. The plan is essentially for it to come up Chapel Hill Road, and then there's a few options through Morrisville to get to the RTP. The last, and the biggest one is the the rail. There is, there is no firm commitment for rail, but the plan is to have a commuter rail stop in Morrisville that are run, and this rail will run from Clayton up to the Durham area. The plan generally says that this stop in Morrisville would be the one for RDU. So in in my mind, ideally, if this all goes through, the TOD could be marketed as from Morrisville's transit oriented area, you can go anywhere in the world just without a car. So I don't want to, I'm not trying to sell you, I'm not trying to say anything too big, but that is overall the plans that are all kind of coming to fruition. And when I was reading the the land use plan in 98, they were talking about a mixed use in a transit oriented area. I just got excited because I think, I think that is something Morrisville can have now if desired. But again, a lot of these things are going to have to come to go, come together over the next, I can't even give you a year, maybe maybe a decade, I don't, I don't know. All right, I I'll keep going for now, if you'd like. I call it recommended reading, it's actually YouTube videos, thought reading made it sound better. But the first one is a YouTube video by a group called City Beautiful Movement. If you if you're interested, these these groups, or this this guy really is one person, he just does explainers on planning items in the history. He's not really advocating for anything, he doesn't have a, I'm sure he does have a stance, but he's not really advocating for you to buy in anything, he's just kind of analyzing. And this video is about 10 minutes long, really interesting for me to watch because it dug into a lot of the history and a lot of the areas of the country that have already done these things. And he he gets into what's worked and what hasn't worked. And it's it's just interesting, it's kind of presented in just a, I guess, a non partisan way, I guess is the best way to describe it. The second one actually is, actually is an author, it is a article, and then it has a YouTube video. This is, it was called What is Traditional Development? This is by a group called Strong Towns. Now, I'll warn you, Strong Towns does have issues that they fight for, like, I can't, the words are slipping my mind right now. They do have stances on issues that they advocate for. This is a very interesting video, it talks about traditional development and why this organization feels that most smaller towns or even cities should go back to a traditional style of development. Talks about the the fiscal value of traditional development over subdivisions. This video really highlights, it's four minutes long, it highlights two sites in the the author's hometown, one of which was built in the 20s and is still had that traditional style of development, buildings up to the road, flat fronts, you know, facades. And a very similar site that the city tore down, and there was a taco something built there that's a drive through, that has all the parking built. And he analyzes the the fiscal value of these and the long term effects of if you think of a traditional downtown building, there's probably been a lot of tenants in that building. It's very easy to circle out a tenant when one tenant goes away and one comes up. But with more modern design, if we build a Wendy's and that Wendy's goes out of business, you still know that was a Wendy's, and it's not really appropriate for other uses, it kind of has to be a fast food restaurant because of the way it was designed. Just really interesting, I just wanted to preface that they do have a stance on things. Both were pretty interesting, both groups, both organizations, I kind of read a lot and and watch their videos just to keep learning about things. Just keep moving on, so I will, I thought I was already going to send this to you before this meeting, but I will send this meeting, this link to you tomorrow. It has a short survey, its survey just says, please identify some developments you like, why you like them, and what parts of those developments make you feel at home, I don't remember the exact words they use. This is from our consultant, they're going to use this to kind of help guide the discussion on September 14th. I'm done talking, I take any questions or comments you have.
My question, my question is more on the format. You know, those are really like, really simple responses that, I I don't want to spend five hours going afterwards, just say, oh, we all agree, we want clean, safe, bright lighting. I mean, I, from a planning and zoning board, I'm looking to provide some technical input, some other, I mean, we're all in business, most of us have probably lived in these types of developments. So I want to make sure this isn't introductory level of 1,001 Post-it notes to go, we all agree, we want extra lighting. I'd rather discuss types of lighting, types of security, types of lines, you know, something technical out of this, otherwise it's, it's just a nice meet and greet.
Yeah. So the these pictures I threw together for this presentation, not the most in depth, and I also intended them to kind of be, especially that first one, to be a wide range of one is clearly going to be good, I hope, one's not going to be as good. The consultants are going to do a few things, they're going to introduce the project, introduce themselves, discuss kind of what's been laid out in the plans, and then get a little more detailed. I don't know if we're going to get into specific types of lighting, this is more of the research, half of the project and not the, well, half of phase one, not the implementation design. Though if you have ideas for lighting, because lighting is crucial, I I would say bring it to that meeting. To be completely transparent, I'm not exactly sure the entire agenda they're going to have. I've seen them do this in other cities, and they, we called references and we hired them, and and it kind of sitting around the table introducing the project, going over things, can't give you too much more detail past that.
Sounds kind of loosey goosey to me, okay.
I'll try to find out more before that.
That would be helpful, that there's some agenda, because even just on those four slides, we went off in 100 different tangents that, you know, might not have been providing answers you wanted. So I want to make sure they have some direction, that we aren't just going to nitpick pictures of other cities, that this is Morrisville, it's specific to that area, and we're actually providing input of how that development would have fit in right there, you know. I I lived in that Palm, that West Palm Beach, so if I know all these areas, I have no reason to go through the signage there or their curbs, I want to make sure it's for this city.
Got you, okay, interesting, thank you.
I have a few different comments, so just bear with me, sorry if I get over wordy. First, Chris, that was a great presentation, I think it was well constructed, easy to follow, I really enjoyed it, so thank you for that. Going, just some some things I noticed, one of the main concerns you talked about with the TOD, or one of the concerns was safety. I think that some of the images that we saw, the Seattle, the Palm Beach, that really highlighted that kind of, that eyes on the street that Jane Jacobs talked about, that really just with the balconies, the glazing, really highlighted some some safety concerns that people might have in an area that would otherwise just be, as you said, a a vertical wall. So that that was, I think that did a really good job just exemplifying that. The, for the bike lanes, something that I I really thought that, and I and I do think that the bike lanes with the parallel parking and the vertical identifiers would probably best for our area in a TOD. I I know that the the ones in Raleigh where it's in between the two lanes of traffic, it seems problematic just because I I see people in this area that still don't know how to interpret a roundabout. So so those bike lanes to me look like a, they pose a risk, the ones where it's in between the two lanes of traffic. So I really like the ones with the parallel parking and the and then the delineation. So finally, I I I think that, you know, I'm really excited for the next five to 10 years to see. Looks like the planning department here just really has a really good vision. So, and you know, with the microtransit, that's that's been fantastic, so I hope that that will continue to be utilized. So I'm really excited about what's coming with this TOD.
Good, good, and thank you.
I have concerns about parallel parking down here.
About what?
Parallel parking down here, more more so than the roundabouts. I've been down here for 20 years, I forgot how to parallel park.
I I mean, I I echo some of the, part of the reason why I would prefer parallel parking over the the, you know, angled parking is to reduce the number of cars incoming in. If you don't have parking, you know, you you should be walking, right? That's, if if you want to promote that, healthy living, you know, energy efficient, public transport based travel, then we have to figure out how do we reduce the number of cars coming into a given area. One example that kind of stood out to me recently was the North Hills Mall area. Even though it is not TOD related, right, but the way they have conceptualized where a target is underground. You know, maybe, I don't know if our area is conducive for building something underground. So in other words, it's not just, you know, you know, lined up, but you're also going a few feet down to to use that area for business purposes, you know, something big, something big like a target, right?
Right, yeah, and I'll say TOD code currently requires all, half of all parking to be non service parking, it has to be underground, it has to be a structure, it has to be something like that. But those are all things that we want to look into, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, underground would, parking could also serve the same purpose of reducing the high source of all the cars around.
Right.
Thank you, Chris.
Thank you, thank you all.
I'll bring you some pictures from Canada.
Do you have any staff comments?
So I actually have item 8B also. And I'll just lead into this if that's okay with you. So this is, 8B is an amendment to the Planning and Board Calendar. So the calendar said at the end of every year, but due to the availability of our consultant being in town on the September 14th, we were asked the PCB if you would meet on this day and tonight officially take action to amend your calendar to make that a a regular meeting date. So I guess if if you would like that, to do that, need a motion and a second or any discussion on that.
Do you have a motion to adopt the revised calendar?
I make a motion to adopt the revised calendar.
Motion by Acharia, any second?
A second.
Member Tahir's seconds, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it.
Adopted, thank you. Okay, let's move on to staff comments if you'd like. So I'll just run over the newsletter, I can't remember if we do everyone, but I'll just talk about it. So first thing is, we have several new development applications that came in this past month. As always, they are on the new development map on the town's website. So first one is Spark Fitness Center, this is a life science campus along McCrimmon, this is a fitness center for that campus, so amenity for the campus employees. Second one's Pet Paradise, this is on WCC Lane, just south of Wake Competition Center. It is a, it's an indoor kennel and veterinary clinic. Last one is a development not yet named, been informally discussed about as Marshall 1.0. 1.0. This is a mixed-use development located on Airport Boulevard, on the east side of Airport Boulevard, between Airport Boulevard and McCrimmon, 350 multifamily units, and a, a hotel along Airport Boulevard proposed. I'll just move to the other news, this discusses the affordable housing implementation that the town staff is, is doing. Basically, no true updates other than continuing to work with HRNA analyzing, you know, surveys the town's done, and updating the webpage periodically. Moving down on the left, we have town council approvals. First thing is, the town council approved the development agreement for the extension of International Drive. This board heard that, I believe, in June. Essentially, this will extend International Drive to its terminus and connect with a road running east to west along, between Airport and McCrimmon Extension, so form a T in that area. This will allow traffic that's on the International Drive currently, a lot of the heavier trucks, to be able to get out and up to 40 without having to travel on Chapel Hill Road. Won't eliminate it at all, but it will give another option and a easy convenient option on Airport to 40. And then, what does that say? Text amendments related to signage, principal uses, and accidents circulation, that planning manager Elliot Ward actually processed, town council approved those in July 26th. This will be on the next planning newsletter, but the text amendments related to tree preservation passed Tuesday night, so you can look those up if you're more interested, or just give me an email. A few things were approved, first thing is a medical office called Health Park Davis Drive on Holly Creek Road, right at the corner of Holly Creek and Davis Drive, and then Phase One of Spark, which is a multi-phased life science campus, this is along McCrimmon Extension. And that is all I have.
Thank you, Chris. Any comments, questions from the board?
Yeah, just a quick one, the affordable housing piece, is that still on schedule to be an overview for next month, is that?
As far as I know, I think a similar work session's going to be happening with the affordable housing, or at least senior planner Danielle will be here discussing. That's, that's much as I know right now, I think so, yeah.
Anything else?
Just, I, I looked at all the videos, thank you for sending those. So those links, I really liked the second one, so for those of you that want some background, they're really interesting. And then you start trolling around looking at all the other stuff that's attached to it.
I read one of the articles by that, what was it, Strom Group?
Oh, look at their video on the bottom, it's a good one.
Yeah, it's pretty good, it's pretty interesting, so, you know, good little background.
Good.
Anything else? Anybody else?
Yeah, I just want to say, I really appreciate the knowledge and experience that our planning department staff has, and appreciate the thoughtful presentation tonight.
Okay, do you have a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
A second.
A second.
Okay, motion, all in favor, say aye. All opposed, no. We are adjourned.
Good job.